Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners, for making this meeting. I think there's a lot of things going on in the media, and I felt that it's an opportunity for the police force to discuss the different things that are going on and give their side of the story. Chief Zabowski has been working through the weekend to get his team ready, and he's going to discuss a variety of issues that were brought up in the last few days. So he will do a presentation, and when he's done, it's open for questions. So Chief Zabowski.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We're very happy to be able to present updates on the department and happy to take your questions and inquiries. We believe very strongly that it's important that there's transparency, not only with you but with the community. It's been a very difficult two years for our law enforcement officers and department staff. From protests to COVID to large department changes, it's extremely important. I think we would agree that we're taking care of all of them so they can provide excellent service to our community. Myself and executive staff are strongly committed to doing that. Within that two-year timeframe, it's been a very busy 15 months. The executive staff has been in place for a little under six months. Our new lieutenants and sergeants were promoted in November, and then we had command changes in December for the executive staff as well. However, during the course of that time, we have been successful in responding to requests from department personnel about what their initial needs were when we started, in terms of putting a 10-hour shift schedule into place to provide a better work-life balance for our officers. We've created new promotional processes, brought in new technology and national training programs. I have conducted 126 one-on-one interviews with department members to include 79 officers, and continued to complete those efforts and remain open to speaking with anyone at an ad hoc basis as well, and that often happens in addition. Communication is an important aspect. I must continue to remind myself that even though we think we are communicating well, it may still fall short or need additional repetition. Sometimes we as leaders think things are going better than the felt experience at the line level, and it's critical that we have an informed perspective. Both myself and my staff are committed to improving communications at all levels, to identify what works and what doesn't work, and address it accordingly. For example, as a result of recent input from our shift representative team, we started a new process culture of recognizing great police work at briefings through that positive reinforcement versus the old methodology of sending a letter of recognition. We remain sympathetic to those on the street and will work with them to address their needs. All of us on this team, and this is a team, we work collectively together to implement change in the department, have walked in the shoes of law enforcement officers. We all recall what that's like, and we know the dangers and the stressors. And so from our position, we're sympathetic to their needs while making sure that we operate the department efficiently and effectively and provide good public service. Staffing is one of those issues that greatly affects line staff and our community, but it's also affected by a myriad of other influences sometimes outside of our control. Recently, there have been questions raised about our department staffing and our ability to keep Fargo safe. So let me assure you that we have been and are continuing to take active measures to fill any staffing gaps. Our city remains and is safe through the committed efforts of our officers. We do have work to do in terms of filling vacancies, but we are working diligently to address them through an all options approach, including revisiting our schedule with officer input and implementing a strategic planning process. And we are seeing on a regular basis the efforts of our officers in addressing any gaps that we can control to help us with the staffing levels as we continue to build our team. So what I'd like to do next is just go through some of the personnel numbers that there was questions about, and then each member of the exec staff has a brief piece or a presentation regarding questions that were asked of the Commissioner that they may like more information on. So we're going to discuss after that staffing. We'll discuss traffic and calls for service, technology, officer wellness, and then I would request that the Commissioners remain after the open meeting so that myself and Assistant Chief Stefanowitz can meet with each of you in groups of two, I'm sorry, in groups of two, to go over exit interviews and provide additional context for some of those personnel issues. I don't think it's appropriate to discuss them in an open forum. Captain Helmick and Deputy Chief Anderson will also meet with you in groups of two to discuss any particular staffing or work hour questions that you might have outside of the public forum because that information also could adversely affect the integrity of our operations or our officer safety. So if you would please do that, it would be greatly appreciated so we can have those conversations and just kind of keep that in mind as we go forward. So on October 5th, when I started, the department had three sworn vacancies: one deputy chief and two officers. But shortly thereafter, a number of officers who already were in the process of leaving came off the payroll. One had already arranged to go to a sworn law enforcement agency in Montana, and that person came off the payroll the day after I started. One was on transitional duty and then just left law enforcement four days after I started. One left for a full-time military position. I did have an opportunity to speak with that individual to try and encourage him to stay, but he already had committed to the full-time military position, and I'm happy to discuss that further in our one-on-ones. That was November 10th. One individual was on a long-term leave that preceded my start date and already had a predetermined end date because he was becoming an attorney, so he went off the payroll on November 20th. Sadly, we had one member who passed away on December 8th, and then we had one member under investigation who resigned on December 7th. So that put us, about eight total in the hole right out of In 2021, we hired 15 sworn officers. Two hired on January 11th, and our largest group of 13, which was the largest group hired at one time since 2002, on September 7th, the result of a very good academy that all of those folks went through. We also had two civilian new hires, police support specialists in a payroll and procurement position. Throughout the course of 2021, we had 25 sworn resignations. 16 of those left law enforcement entirely, and so I've outlined where they went. Three were recruits who did not complete their PTO training. Seven were retirements. Two left under investigation, and four took other jobs in other industries, non-law enforcement jobs. Nine went to other departments: three to other state agencies, three out of state, and three locally. 19 of the 23 who were eligible to be rehired also signed onto the rehire list, meaning this is an optional thing for them to do. When they leave the department, they can opt to request to be rehired if they want to come back to the department. They don't have to do that. That goes to me and has to be approved by me. So 83% of those people signed on to be rehired. We also had a large promotional pool. Throughout our process, we had nine folks apply for the lieutenant position and 34 apply for the sergeant position. We also recently completed, we did a detective process, and I'm sure you saw last week where we promoted for the first time in a long time 19 permanent detectives to eliminate the rotational effect that that was having and the strain on them and likely the, creating a better service to the community, having those subject matter experts in position. We also had seven civilian resignations. Four just went from a law enforcement position, two left to become jailers. I have more information on that, but one specifically was interested in maybe becoming an officer and felt that was a career path to get experience to come back and apply. One left under investigation, five of six signed on to be rehired by the department. In 2022, and this is through January 24th, so through next Monday, we have five sworn new hires that will be swearing in next Monday. We've also have six new civilian hires: two police support specialists on the 3rd, they're already in place, and then on the 24th, our last police support specialist, and our three crime analysts. So we'll have 11 folks joining our department on January 24th. We've also had four sworn departures. One left law enforcement to take a full-time military position. Two went to other departments, one moving to Indiana and one to Cass County. One was terminated. Three of three signed on to be rehired. We've had no civilian resignations, and for the first time in a long time, or at least that I can, since I've been here, our records unit is fully staffed, so we're in the process of training those folks. I've met many of the, I've met the new hires already, absent the one that's starting on the 24th, and that looks to be a much improved operation. Our intelligence and analysis unit will also be fully staffed at that time. Looking at the exit interviews, one of them actually was a person who was on long-term leave and was making comments about the prior administration. He was never in the building, worked with me or met me, and so those comments, some of which unwittingly were utilized in reporting, have nothing to do with this administration and this executive team. 12 out of the remaining 17 have positive comments or ratings, so 71% of the 18 exit interviews submitted were positive either in comments or in ratings. And again, the rehire list piece that we talked about, a large amount of these folks have signed on to be rehired, and they certainly didn't have to do that. As we move forward in 2022, we vetted out 95 applicants for our academy. We have allotted up to 30 seats. That starts on May 5th. It's likely that we may only attain 25, so at this juncture, we're continuing to finalize that. As part of our communication efforts in attempting to deal with the vacancy issue, we've really reached out to all members to try and make them comfortable letting us know when they have pending retirements or even pending resignations, if nothing more, so that we can plan ahead and also attempt to retain them if there's an issue that we can fix. So we're aware of two pending retirements, one spring and one summer. And so our vacancies as of January 24th will be 20 sworn positions, which is 10.5% of our sworn staff. And we'll have three civilian positions vacant that we are in the process are, have already been posted for. Additionally, we're working with the City Communications Division to fill public information and community engagement positions to support our department communication efforts. They have been filling in since the departure of our prior PIO and have been doing an excellent job in raising the bar in terms of our communication efforts, learning the department, and I think it's been a good experience all around, so we look forward to filling those positions as well. Just some national data. This is comparing, so the Police Executive Research Forum did a study comparing two periods, April 2020 to March 21, and April 19 to March 20. I think it was about 100 departments, so not a large sample, but the average hiring rate had fallen 5%. This is in law enforcement agencies across the US. The average resignation rate had risen 18%, average retirement rate up 45%. They recently, in the last week, sent out a new survey because they, just through their contacts, as we're seeing nationally, these rates are likely continuing to rise, and so we're participating in the new survey as well to help populate some of that data. That concludes my presentation. If there aren't any questions on that, I would like to have Captain Helmick come up and talk to you about staffing in the department.
Any questions at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. So the first one's for you, Mr. Chair. You're the liaison with the police department. So according to my math, 36 positions, 36 people left. Were you aware of that?
The 36 number I wasn't aware of, but I was aware of some people that left, yes.
Anyway, speaking as a Commissioner, I found out about this last Tuesday or Wednesday of last week. As soon as I found out about it, I put it on the agenda for our next city commission meeting. Kimber can verify that. This is alarming. And then when I heard that the day shift was only half-staffed, if we would have had something happen like a riot or whatever, and we were not fully staffed, that's jeopardizing our public, and to me, our number one job is law enforcement, law and order, public safety. And to have these numbers, and now they're all coming out, which is great. Why were we not aware of this? Because this just didn't happen today. And so this is very concerning. I'm glad it's coming out to the public right now, but it should have been done a long time ago. And a couple of things, observations. It was interesting, at our last city commission meeting, a member of the public got up and spoke about the lack of traffic tickets being written. I think now we know why, because we didn't have staff on the street. And to me, this is jeopardizing public safety. And so to get up here now and start saying, well, we're coming forward with all these solutions, it's like, hey, man, it's a little bit late for that. So I, no, I'm not finished.
I'm sorry.
I think this is a very much of a concern. All the rest of the Commissioners, we should have known about this, but we do rely on, we all have liaison appointments, and our job as a liaison is to be connected with that, whoever that liaison is. I'm engineering or planning, or do you get what I'm saying? You weren't doing your job.
Mr. Pepper, I'd remind you, this is not a political issue. This is an issue we need to address.
Mr. Chair.
Let me finish. Let me finish, sir. This discussion has gotten out in the news. There are issues that the chief has made us aware of. He's making you aware. You requested a report. We're giving you the report, and we're all concerned about public safety. We will have further explanations about what you heard on the news, further be clarified. And I apologize if you're not getting it, but you're getting it now, and you will get it. You will get the information. And the chief will have some of his deputy chiefs or captains explain to you what that shift actually was and what we actually had on the street. So you'll get more data and information. Today's the meeting in which you're going to get data, and then we're going to figure out what, as a Commission, to do about it. Go ahead, Mr. Pepper.
So, Mr. Chair, the other thing that was a very bad move, and I don't know who in the press department of the city of Fargo did the release, but so last Friday, Kevin Wolivan did a report, and then the city staff had the audacity to criticize Kevin Wolivan, who is a multiple Emmy winner. I think he's been in the news business for over 40 years, one of the most respected journalists in our region, and for the city and the police department to put out a release criticizing him, I believe that's, that was a very bad move. And I don't know who did that. Obviously, chief, you're the one responsible, but it was a city press release. I hope everybody got a chance to see that, but that was, that was unforgivable. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my comments for right now.
Mr. Preston.
So this, this portion of this presentation is to ask Chief Zabowski questions about his data, not to pontificate. And I, Commissioner Pepper, there's time for that. We need to hear the rest of the data. I just have a question for you, chief. So you obviously have been doing exit interviews. Has that been something that has been done?
Yes.
In the past?
Yes.
Okay. And you take that data and use it to make policy changes or practice changes, I'm assuming?
Absolutely. Yeah, no, we're, myself and the Assistant Chief, or both in some cases, I've met with nearly everyone that has left. As soon as we have found out, in some instances, you don't find out till it's like very late in the game, which is why we reached out more to say, look, if you're thinking about doing something different and there's something we can do within the department to retain you, that's what we want to do, because there's a lot of opportunities here. But as I said, you know, previously, there's a lot of folks that the opportunities are something they were waiting for. You know, from not being to maybe want to work in such a busy place to being in a more rural area, et cetera, or closer to where their family is, is a big draw with all of the vacancies that are out there nationally. But we do meet with them. We have done, in some cases, altered schedules and altered opportunities to retain people, because what you don't see in the numbers is the people that we have been able to work with to retain with opportunities or a different assignment in the department. So we're continually trying to seek ways to do that.
Okay. So as I looked at your numbers, it looked like there were probably five individuals, and not to, not to pull those five out by any means, but the exit interviews did show more positive kind of exits, and probably five individuals that may not have been quite so positive. So I know how difficult it is to get exit interviews. I've done it. I've tried it, and sometimes people are just out the door and you can't catch them. So having done that so thoroughly is impressive, for one thing. And then you use the data then to actually manage the department. A question in there is, you know, we all know up here that we have been affected in Fargo by what happened with the George Floyd murder. I mean, we saw the protests here, and at one point, it got concerning with the rioting, not with the protests, but with the rioting. So, and then there was a lot of scrutiny that happened after that. Did any of them, and I'm thinking more of the retirements, was that an issue that came up? Was that causing stress which led to retirements?
Well, I think that that is a factor, and it probably plays out in the national data as well. But we know that, you know, from PTSD to other trauma like that, that's a big issue in our department as well as others. And we'll have some folks appear to talk to you about our officer wellness, comprehensive officer wellness program, which was also something that a vast majority of our department was requesting, and we have been working as quickly as we can. I think that, in my opinion, this executive staff, and remember, we had to put the pieces together first before we could start on the larger projects, has done extraordinary work in a very short amount of time, and they're all very committed to that. So yes, there's mention of protests, but it's more so related to even the long-term stress and sometimes the, the pace of work. You know, the pace of work here is very busy, from calls to, to other things that they have to deal with.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Mr. President.
Just a question about this, there was a day where the day shift was understaffed by half. Is that true?
So Captain Helmick is going to come up and explain that to you. So there are, and I'm going to let him explain it, but the numbers aren't static as you, as it may look to you. And so there's a little more to that story.
Actually, I'd just like you to answer the question. Was there a shift where there was, where we were understaffed by half? And has that ever happened before in the history of Fargo?
Yes and yes. It has happened in the past. As I look through surveys, I've got officers telling me they work with three to four people on the street. Yes, there are six on a day, but there's also overlapping shifts and people that we bring in or hold over to account, so there aren't just six. So depending on what day, Captain Helmick has a full month of data for you to sit down and look at and explain that to you. So with the overlapping shifts, it's not a static number for the whole time, but there are periods of time. And the way it's set up is to have officers working when we're the busiest. We also have issues with if someone calls in sick and things that are out of our control. So we have been doing everything we can to address those issues as soon as we can. But we have not failed in any way to protect the public or respond to any priority calls for service.
Can I ask one more question? Then have we ever had a year where 36 employees have left in one year?
In Fargo?
Yes.
Well, that, that wasn't, I don't think it was 36 in one year. I think you're counting a couple of years there, but I don't know. I can't answer that question. All right. We're ready to move on to staffing. All right, I'm going to have Captain Helmick come up and discuss that with you.
Morning, Commissioners. Back on December 27th, I was assigned to take over the Neighborhood Services Division, which is, includes our patrol. And I immediately started looking at any staffing concerns. It's something that's been ongoing. I know Deputy Chief Anderson, who was in charge of that position before me, also was looking at staffing, probably on a weekly, if not daily, basis, because that's always a concern when you're running the patrol division to make sure that we have enough officers on the street. Just to give you some background, we currently have a 10-hour shift that was implemented by Chief Zabowski and the rest of the department. That was developed based on some ideas that the chief had and also based on feedback that the officers gave about how they wanted to improve the, the schedule that we had previously. The, the new schedule that we developed, some benefits to that was that officers would get every other weekend off. They would also have a common training day where all personnel were working, which really helped improve our efficiencies for training. And the main intent of that schedule was to improve the work-life balance of all the officers. And that seemed to be working very well. Obviously, the length of a shift is an important part of wellness in law enforcement, and that is a hot topic across the country about whether departments should do 12 hours, 10 hours, nine hours, eight hours, what have you, whatever variation is out there. So we decided that 10 hours was the, the best option at the time for us. Also, last fall, we were able to hire 11 of the graduates from our academy, and they are going to be wrapping up their field training here within just a matter of a couple of weeks, and that's going to help us fill 11 more spots on the patrol side. We're also looking at some other challenges within the department where we have a need to fill investigation spots. We have a large number of pending investigation cases, and there's a need there. We also have currently two openings in SROs that need to be filled. So we were working, and just to give you a little bit of background there, those positions are filled with patrol officers that are making lateral assignments. And so that's another dynamic that we need to look at. And on top of that, we've been battling what everyone else has been battling: COVID, other sicknesses, injuries that come up, things that are really out of our control, but we try to manage and deal with the best we can when, when those things happen. So every, one of those things are a daily challenge, and our lieutenants, sergeants, and myself are constantly looking at options and trying to make sure that we have enough officers on the street to take care of the job that we have assigned to us. But honestly, we are finding it increasingly difficult with some of the most recent departures to staff the street. And, you know, we rely on folks coming in to work overtime. We approach officers about rearranging their schedule to see if they'll help us out. We also, if needed, will pull from secondary assignments. Community engagement team has really been helping us out as needed. Our downtown resource officers also help out when it's necessary. And there's other sources that we can go to if we need to. Also, if we have an extra supervisors working a particular shift, they also will help out taking calls for service. So again, even when we're strapped, we try to get the job done. The, since I took over, we started looking at different options that we had to deal with the, the staffing concerns that we all have. And what we're trying to do is avoid doing drastic things like mandatory overtime or drastically rearranging people's schedules or doing things that really are going to probably put us in a worse position. I've brought my concerns to the chief, and he's been receptive and listened to those ideas and concerns that I've had. And he's tasked me to come up with a plan and refine that plan, and our hope is to have that in place by late February, early March. And we believe that that plan will help put more officers on the street on a consistent basis, at least temporarily. And what we're also going to do once that plan is developed is I'm going to take that to the officers, and we're going to get feedback on the plan, let them know what we're doing, why we're doing it, and get their input to, to help make that plan even better. Looking forward, like the chief mentioned, we have four officers, I'm sorry, five officers being hired on January 24th. Obviously, it's going to take time for them to complete their field training, so we anticipate by June or July, they will be ready to go on the streets and fill additional patrol spots. And then on top of that, as the chief also mentioned, we'll have anywhere between 20 and 30 students in the academy. You know, and again, it's going to take time for them to complete their academy training and then their field training. So realistically, by December, January, we hope that they'll be able to fill out a good majority of the spots. So, you know, in the short term, we are going to continue to make sure that we are keeping the city safe and filling all of the patrol spots we possibly can. And we are certainly willing to restructure the schedule. We're certainly willing to do things that we need to do to do that. But so far, we've been able to maintain and to address the, the Commissioner's question about the day shift where there was half the staffing, that is true. There have been other, there's been more than one. I'll tell you that right now. But what I can tell you is that out of the 72 shifts since December 21st, we've had 12 of those where we were temporarily short-staffed, and we either had overlapping shifts that helped supplement that staffing. So it's really difficult with the schedule that we have. We have overlapping shifts. So yes, we might have a certain number on one shift, but the overlapping shifts will help supplement that. On top of that, like I said, if we have excess supervisors, if we bring in folks for overtime, that'll help supplement that number. I also leave it up to the patrol lieutenants that if they feel that the call load at the current time or the, the day of the week is going to allow to go at a lower number, they can try it. But, you know, again, we do that very hesitantly because we don't want to put anybody in a safety concern, and we don't want to not provide adequate service to the and we don't want to not provide adequate service to the city. So it's not a perfect solution, but we are managing that the best we can on a daily basis. And we're going to continue to do that while working on this long-term plan to boost those numbers.
Mr. Officer Helmick, is the question I have is when we're talking about this. You have four different shifts that we have. You sometimes ask people to work another two hours, four hours. You ask other people to come in and do other things.
Correct.
So the dynamic, when you get, you start a shift, and you say, I only got six guys coming in, two got COVID, somebody's got an injury, somebody's got an injury. That's a dynamic list. You are charged with trying to fill it or to have other things happen. So when you have this piece of paper that show me shows, oh, there's only six on at this time. So you're responsible on a daily basis to try to fill that time or bring people in if you can. At the same time, you struggle because if guys are on a long shift, they're a little tired after being on, and it's sometimes hard to have people do that. So I hear it as a priority is to get your positions filled. So we get away from this. Is that correct?
Absolutely. And you're right. And we really, like I said, we try to avoid, you know, folks that are on their days off, calling them and saying, hey, you have to come in. But, you know, if we are going to run a little short on day shift, for example, we'll have one of the night shift officers stay a couple hours just to help us out and get us to that next overlap shift. Same thing might happen on evenings or nights. And that might be a situation too where we're adequately staffed, but the calls for service that particular day are really high, and we just need that extra help. And fortunately, we have some officers that are, well, actually, all of our officers have been more than willing to help out and carry that load when necessary. But we try not to, to overuse that.
Mr. Pepcorn?
The thing that bothers me is our commission, we've had an excellent record of supporting law enforcement. We've done your new center, additional funding. We support you. We didn't know anything about this till last Tuesday or Wednesday. How can you, how can you, that's unacceptable. We didn't, we would, if you need help, we can't help if we don't know about it. We, I didn't know about it. Maybe somebody else did, but come on, man. We didn't know about it. And you, this, obviously, this is an issue, and it wasn't brought to us. Why?
The only thing I can tell you, Commissioner, is that I, as the division commander for the patrol division, will do a better job of presenting that information to the chief so he can share that with the mayor and then in turn with the commission.
What bothers me is, how about just calling me? One of you, somebody have some frickin' courage to call and tell what's going on. I know a lot of you. And yet, the other thing that troubles me is now we've got this command and control where no one else can speak. I've heard most of the media say back in the day, they used to be able to talk to the sergeants off the record. That is not allowed anymore. That reminds me of what? What's that remind you of? A communist, whatever you want to call it, control, command and control. It's like, man, this, this is not, this is not a healthy relationship. And I'm just so disappointed. And chief, you have to admit that we have a track record of supporting law enforcement. So why were we not notified so we could help you?
Sure. And I apologize for that. I'll take responsibility for that. That is not, I guess I didn't think it was something that you wanted to know because it's, it's not something the commission can immediately fix. It's really part of us managing the department because every other department has these same struggles. Every other department has gaps that they are filling. And so I apologize, and if that's information that you want to know on a regular basis, I am happy to provide it. Absolutely.
Once again, we count on the liaison commission. Obviously, he's not doing his job. And the other departments lose one or two employees. I've talked to other law enforcement in the area. They lose one, they've lost one or two, not thirty-six. So this is, this is way more, and to claim it's mental stress from the past difficulties of the past years in Fargo, that's a stretch. I mean, in Fargo, this is not, we are not Minneapolis. We are not Chicago. We have the support of our public. You guys know that. Our neighborhoods, we love you guys. And to say that this is, you don't have the same altercations that we have in Minneapolis or Chicago. Correct?
You can respond. Well, yes. In a sense, we, it's not as violent as in those cities, but we deal with the same issues. I'm happy to provide any information that the commission wants about the department. I simply didn't think that was an issue that... Well, first of all, there isn't anything you can do about it. I appreciate your support, but it's an issue for us to manage. And we have been working on it, not just now, but we have been working on it for some time, which is why we made some changes towards the end of the year in terms of the personnel. So I fully appreciate your, your feeling about not being informed. And you can call or email me anytime if there's a question. If I get a question from other commissioners, I just simply let the mayor know that I've received this and what the response is. So I don't want you to feel like you can't reach out. I did have a brief phone conversation last week, and I, you know, I understand it was a tight timeline, but I did offer to meet in person. I'm happy to do that as well. But even during that conversation, I didn't even, it didn't dawn on me that this was something either that was of great concern to you. So I apologize for that, and we can certainly fix that.
You and I spoke on Friday, correct?
I think it was Thursday.
Thursday or Friday. You never talked about the thirty-six employees.
Right.
And so, yeah, no, that's, that's not good. That's not a good sign.
So just to clarify some facts, the twenty-five are officers, thirty-five is with civilians. The other issue is on Ternus's reign, the vacancy rate ran about ten, eleven percent. And on Todd's watch, it also ran about eleven percent. We're at ten percent right now, so we're right and marked with that. So it's not something that has not happened. I remind Commissioner Pepcorn, we have two hundred officers or two hundred in the police department right now. So twenty out of two hundred is ten percent. So it's not something that suddenly blew up and is suddenly an issue that's happened. It's both civilian and police officers equipped. And if you don't think what's going on in society right now is affecting the ability to recruit and hire, we started our police academy three sessions ago. We are filling it with twenty-five to thirty people. We are hiring almost ninety percent of those people. So the reality is, is police was forward in this and is trying to get ahead of this. And you're just about this far from catching there in the next six months and should have a full, a full group. But I don't know in the history of Fargo that we've ever had a full, full department, that we've had a hundred percent of all the positions filled. It just doesn't happen. Things happen out there.
Right. And if I could just clarify also, Commissioner Pepcorn, that those twenty vacancies include three new positions that, as you say, supporting our department, you were added in twenty-twenty-two. So three of those vacancies are positioned newly added also. Okay, thank you, sir. I believe we have Deputy Chief Anderson is going to come up and talk about some of the traffic questions and calls for service that you have referenced.
Good morning, commissioners, mayor. I understand you have some questions in regards to traffic and incidents, calls for service. Hopefully, the information I provide you now will answer those questions. Undoubtedly, our officers are busy. And taken into account the staffing, obviously logically, one can conclude less officers to be more proactive, also less officers to take those calls for service. So in twenty-twenty-one, Fargo officers issued nine thousand three hundred citations. Of that, three hundred and sixty-nine DUIs and a hundred and twelve DUI refusals. I believe there was a question along lines of our activity on New Year's. So on December thirty-first and January first of this past month, we had eleven officers working the night shift. They issued seventeen citations, one of those being a DUI refusal. By comparison, in twenty-twenty, Fargo officers issued eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-three citations. DUIs were, were up at four hundred and forty and DUI refusals at a hundred and thirty-five. By comparison, also on New Year's, we had eleven night shift officers working on twelve thirty-one, two thousand, going into one-one of twenty-one. They issued sixty-six citations, five DUIs and two refusals. Twenty-nineteen, Fargo officers issued thirteen thousand six hundred and eighty-two citations. Five hundred and sixty DUIs, DUI refusals, we issued a hundred and twenty-seven. And then on New Year's night, New Year's morning, we issued seventy-seven citations, four DUIs, one refusal. We had ten night shift officers working, and we held two evening shift officers over on overtime to help for staffing. So our officers are busy, and I'm sure you have undoubtedly throughout the year have received phone calls from citizens complaining about traffic. I know traffic is a top priority for the city as well as the police department. In, in twenty-twenty-one, we did directed patrol efforts in a number of different areas along Sixty-Fourth Avenue, Fifty-Second Avenue, in the fourteen-hundred block of Ten Street. Those were areas that we had received information of being complaints on. So our officers worked numerous traffic control or traffic details in those areas. As far as incident activity, I don't have the, the officer ICR numbers, the amount of reports that they've taken. We just can't data mine that very easy, but what I can provide you is an overview of the incident activity that the officers experienced in twenty-one, twenty and nineteen by comparison. So in twenty-twenty-one, Fargo officers responded to a hundred and two thousand one hundred and sixty-four incidents. Of those incidents, roughly eighteen thousand were proactive in measure. So our COP, community oriented policing, field contacts, as well as traffic stops. In twenty-twenty-one, we conducted nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven traffic stops. In twenty-twenty, we responded to one hundred thousand five hundred and twenty-nine incidents, twenty-two thousand of those being proactive in nature, COP field contact and traffic stops. In twenty-nineteen, we responded to a hundred and nine thousand four hundred and seventy-one incidents and thirty-one thousand of those being proactive in nature. So our officers are busy. They feel, I believe, some, some operational fatigue due to the staffing. However, they, they deserve all the credit for, for obviously being, or maintaining the safety of the city. And if you have any further questions, I'll be more than happy to, to address those.
Mr. Preston?
So I'm assuming the numbers, as you were talking, they went down over the three years related to COVID, I'm assuming. There just weren't that many people out on the road. If they were drinking, they were drinking at home. The speeding issue, which I've also been concerned about, as I understand, as I'm reading the literature, is related to the fact that the roads are empty. So people are more inclined to speed because it's safer to do so. Any, any feedback on that? Is that what you're seeing from the law enforcement side?
I think logically, one could conclude that, that there's obviously less people on the roads. Twenty-twenty was not a good comparison year, obviously because of COVID. A little surprisingly, the calls for service were not that far off from twenty-twenty-one, which one would have figured, you know, it's a quieter year. However, without doing a deeper dive into the data, what type of incidents we responded to at, at residents probably increased, which helped to kind of equalize the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty data. But just to kind of by comparison, and I can provide all the number, all the information at your request. But in twenty-twenty-one, officers wrote just over nineteen hundred speeding citations. So one thousand nine hundred and three, to be specific, in twenty-twenty-one. So...
And what was that in nineteen?
In nineteen, that was... I apologize for not having it readily available. In twenty-nineteen, we issued one thousand eight hundred and ninety-two speeding citations.
So similar.
Similar.
Good.
Thanks, Joe.
Oh, sure. The media and the chief have already, they've mentioned it as well, but we are in the midst, nearly completed with our online reporting project. So we anticipate going live with that within the next, hopefully within the next month. We're working out some, some minor issues. However, that online reporting, we put a committee together. They identified a handful of ordinances that residents would be able to make criminal reports over online. We'd anticipate roughly, it's just anecdotal data, but we anticipate roughly over six thousand reports could be diverted from officers to the online reporting system.
Thank you. Thank you. Captain Vincent is going to come up and briefly talk about some of the benefits he's seen from body-worn cameras, just for your knowledge.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, good morning. Here to give an update on a key piece of technology that we've acquired at the police department, our Axon body-worn cameras, fleet cameras, and interview room cameras. As you know, through generous support of our community and this commission, we were able to acquire a very expensive piece of technology that has proven, as we suspected, to be very vital in our operations to improve our service to the community. One of the things that we immediately noticed was how this technology is interfacing with our use of force incidents and our personnel complaints. This technology, as you know, was purchased at the end of last year. Our Training and Development Unit put together a very aggressive timeline to train all of our staff, the entire police department in the month of September, to effectively use this equipment. And in October, we began using this equipment throughout the police department. So in a little over three-month-ish, we've seen some very positive uses of our body-worn cameras with regard to use of force. Specifically, we've had nine instances of citizens claiming use of force against, that the officer used against them as being inappropriate. And as we look at the body-worn camera in those nine instances, the allegations were completely fabricated. These are situations where, for whatever reason, an arrestee has a claim against a police officer that's found to be exonerated. In addition, we had two situations in the last three months where an individual has made a claim, a criminal claim against an officer that they were assaulted by the officer, which was directly refuted by the body-worn camera footage. And so we continue to see that type of results from this technology, which, which is a good thing for our officers. You might ask yourself, why is this important? And as I explained, the, the revamp that we did to the use of force review process within the police department, I'd ask you to indulge me here a little bit, putting yourself in the shoes of an officer, being dispatched to an incredibly chaotic situation where people calling nine-one-one don't give all of the details about what's happening at the, at the scene. And as an officer, you arrive, you deal with the situation. Maybe it's outside, it's dark, it's towards the end of your shift. And one of the individuals that's there at that situation that you're trying to, to better understand presents a situation that you believe is a safety concern for yourself or for someone else that is there, that's present. And while we do a very good job of training our officers on these types of situations, despite an officer's best attempt at de-escalation, there are times when force needs to be used to make sure that the officer stays safe or to make sure that the other innocent party remains safe to effect a lawful arrest. And so as, as you use that force as an officer to effect that arrest, you write your report and you go home for the day, you might think that the stress of that situation is over. That's not accurate. As you would find from many officers, the ongoing use of force review is extremely stressful for officers that use force. It's not something that officers enjoy doing, using force against people. It's something that we train our best to avoid if we can, but unfortunately, there are times it needs to happen. The reason I bring that up is the improvements that we've made over the last year, year and a half to our use of force review process internally. It was very apparent that this was causing... It was very apparent that this was causing a lot of stress to our staff. Some of these use of force reviews were taking months to complete. So what you had seconds to decide in the dark and in the chaotic situation, others have months to review. And that was something we needed to improve. So as we put our heads together and found better ways to review these uses of force, because as we all know, the officers know, we all know, there's a great amount of accountability and scrutiny that goes into using force against our citizens, there should be. And so we needed to be more timely, we needed to be cognizant of the fact that we have to hold ourselves to a high level of accountability. And making a new process with our professional accountability unit teamed with our Training and Development Unit to make these use of force reviews more timely is something that we've seen a lot of benefit in. What used to take months to complete now is done within 96 hours, many times within 24 to 48 hours. This is something that's been important to us to fix. And while we still have room to grow, things we need to improve with our personnel complaints as it relates to timing, and we continue to work on that, it is noteworthy, I believe, that we're making great effort to try to minimize the stress that an officer is going to be put in in those situations. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Chief, we got about 10 minutes. You got your team?
Yep, I have one last piece here. Lieutenant Offelt and Assistant Chief Stefanowicz are going to talk about our efforts in terms of officer wellness, and then we can wrap up from there.
Mayor Commissioners, thank you. Lieutenant Offelt is going to discuss a handful of items here that are kind of our foundational building blocks as it relates to our officer wellness program. It's important that you understand what those pieces mean, how those blocks started, to what we're working towards today as an overarching wellness theme. As you noticed in the exit interviews of a few, mental wellness was a very important topic. For me, that's a difficult one because it's almost like working blindfolded. The reason it's like working blindfolded is I can't have access to a lot of that information to discern what exactly the issue might be. So it's because of some courageous individuals that during their exit interviews were sharing some of that information with me on a personal level that we're able to make some strides forward. I've been working with the Safety Director and our Human Resources Group as we're trying to address those things. But just give me a moment here to let Lieutenant Offelt here speak on a couple of those foundational blocks, and we'll bring that back to our overarching theme as it relates to wellness.
Thank you, Assistant Chief. Mayor Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. To give a little context as to where our department has been in the last 20 years plus since I've worked here, we, I had for many years called, a team called the Peer Assistance Crisis Team or PAC Team. I'm sure some of you probably heard that referred to in the past. And really, this was started in the late 90s for our agency and came out of some training for critical incident stress management. And so a trend in the nation with law enforcement and other first responders was to kind of attack situations that might cause post-traumatic stress or post-traumatic stress disorder with critical incident stress management techniques. And the team at our department that was started in the late 90s and continues today is training some of those techniques. Now, understand, they're not mental health professionals by any means, they're not counselors, they're not psychiatrists, psychologists, but training specific techniques, basically listening techniques and some education to help with, to help officers cope with some of these situations that they see, and then also help educate not only what to do at home, but also give some resources as to where they might go if there's something more than what we can deal with. That started out, especially when I first started and came on the team in 2003, just with what we called one-on-one sessions, meaning one officer speaking to another officer about some situation that happened. Peer-to-peer is very important in first response because there aren't many people that see what we see, and a lot of the things we see, we don't want to tell people that are outside of our profession because we might traumatize them. And so peer-to-peer discussions are very important. And the majority of what our team does is one-on-one peer-to-peer discussions to help educate and just listen. When we have major incidents, and we do many of these throughout the year, we have what's called a diffusal where it's very important that people have the opportunity to talk, to speak, to mentally process what's just happened and to process with everyone who's been involved right after the incident or as soon after the incident as we can. And so that's something that we've continued to do. And then we have what's called a debrief where we delve even more into that process. And so that's what we had called the PAC Team at the time has done for many, many years. And I feel that our agency for many years has been one of the leaders in the region in providing that resource, not only to our agency, but we've done that to outside, with outside agencies. As we've progressed into the last few years, and especially at the end of 2019, we actually renamed our team to more reflect what we have been doing. And because we sat back and we looked and we said, okay, we do a very few number of debriefs a year, there aren't many required, we do a few more diffusals, but we do many, many one-on-ones all the time. As a matter of fact, we don't know how many we do because they're very, they're private. We don't keep the numbers, but we know that every person on our team is doing them all the time. And so we're providing peer support. And we renamed our team to the Peer Support Team. Officers that we talked to are not always in crisis, as our last title said, they're just looking for support, and that's what we do. Listening to officers when they speak to us over many years, a lot of them said, hey, it'd be great to have other counseling options. Our agency and our city provides Employee Assistance Program, EAP, where we can go to the village and speak to people. But not every situation can be covered by what's at the village. And sometimes people want to pick other people to talk to, other counselors to talk to. And so we were looking for some type of solution to that, and that's a very hard solution because it's not easy to find counselors that are trained in the specific needs that police departments or other first responder, first response agencies might have. Towards, what was in 2020, there was a program called RST, which is Resiliency Support Therapy, was provided. And the great thing about that, especially 2020 with COVID going on, is officers could call anonymously to this group. It was provided by a grant, so it was free of charge. And there were three counselors in our region that were trained specifically to deal with law enforcement that we were able to either reach out to over the phone or meet in person. That grant has been refunded for 2022, and we will continue to use that resource. And that is the resource that we put into place very quickly to try to respond to officers' need to have different counselors to talk to. We don't, we cannot talk about how much that is being used, but we have had officers come forward and say they are using it. So we know it's being used by our agency, and it's also being used regionally by other law enforcement agencies within our metro, within our region. Continuing to look forward to other solutions for that counselor piece, that's a definite goal of ours with the Peer Support Team, and I know also Assistant Chief Stefanowicz. One thing that we're really looking forward to here into 2022 and that I'm particularly excited about because it's a little bit, it provides a culture change, it changed the way of thinking for our agency as a whole, and it's called Valor, which is put out by the IACP International Association Chiefs of Police. And it's a training that we'll be able to go to, we're going to start the process in March. And that process will include training the trainer, and we're hoping that by late summer, early fall, we'll have our entire agency training this. But what it does is it teaches life skills, not only, and there's actually 10 life skills, to not only process what we deal with at work or on the street, but also how do we deal with that at home? And how do we deal with individuals on the street? How do we speak with them? How do we handle conflict? And so I'm very excited about Valor, what I'll have, I'm just about done here because I know we're short on time, but I'll have handouts for you all on both RST and Valor at the end of, at the end of this session.
So again, I know we're short on time, so I'm waiting for the red light to go off or a buzzer to time me out. But, because once you get me started on some of these topics, I don't stop. So in the interest of time, just to wrap this up, there will be some additional heart screening, the Chief of Police and myself and our employee health group. We're going to be in a conference call with Dr. Ben Stone on January 25th about some additional heart screening that's really important to us. Through the IACP, which Lieutenant Offelt mentioned, they provided an agency assessment tools that relates to wellness and some action planning resources for us. That wasn't readily available to us before, again, so we're trying to focus all of our efforts into the mental, physical, and emotional wealth, health of all of our officers to make, to ensure that they're all happy, healthy, and wealthy as best that we can emotionally, spiritually. So in the interest of time, I'll stop there, but happy to answer any questions individually.
Any questions by the Commissioner? After.
Not related to this topic specifically, but I think in general, everyone can agree that there are some serious issues with the Police Department. And this is one of those scenarios where we can't do nothing. And the reason we can't do nothing is because, Chief, I respectfully disagree, this commission can do something. And here's what I'm going to do. We need to start, the Chief isn't the head of his department necessarily, he has a boss, he has administrators. So it's now time to pull in the administration of the City of Fargo to oversee how we get this department well. Okay? So call it a professional improvement plan, call it whatever your business calls it, but we all have an idea of what this is. First, we need to specifically define what a successful police department looks like, what you think of with a good department, and clearly define that. Second, we need to clearly identify how our department is not meeting that standard. And then third, we define exactly how we get from where we are to that ideal police department that we're looking for. So what's going to happen is, I'm going to work on this, but Tim, it's your department. If you want to work with me, I'm happy to do that, but I will be doing this. I'm going to work with the administration to define what needs to be fixed and identify all the deficiencies. And then the administration and the chief are going to sit down and agree or disagree on these things, and they're going to sign a contract. They're going to say, here's how we're going to get from where we are to where we're going, and we're going to give it a specific timeframe, six months, whatever that timeframe may be. But it's going to be agreed upon and it's going to be signed. If it's that point, the suspension date, the department isn't where it needs to be, then something needs to happen. Either we stick with the chief that we have or we don't, based on those criteria that we've all agreed upon. So that's going to be the motion that I'm going to make at the City Commission meeting. I'm going to allow the administrators some time until that meeting to get this contract together, to get this ball rolling, and then on Monday, I'm going to make that motion. So there are things we can do, we need to do it, and we need to be able to find exactly what our department should be based on where we are today.
Any other comments? Commissioner Strand, you've been on the phone, did you have anything you wanted to say?
I actually would, thank you, Mayor Mahoney. And sorry that I couldn't be there in person, and I won't rub it in how warm it is where I am. This is a really important discussion in the bigger view, more than the public would generally know. Several months ago, I'm assuming the other Commissioners and the Mayor also got an anonymous letter, and I don't like anonymous letters, but you have no choice but to read them and learn from them. But we all got an anonymous letter in detail informing us of concerns with regards to issues in the Police Department. I don't know what the other Commissioners did, but I immediately started asking the Police Chief that night in our meeting that same day about retention and recruiting and loss of people and how we're doing with our staff and morale. And every time I see the Police Chief since then, he can probably confirm, I almost always ask him, what's the status of the department? How many openings are there? How many vacancies? Where are we at with this? So I think we're all have had a moment to learn about this, and I'm not pointing fingers, I'm just saying that that's the reality. So then I'm going to go forward. Then, I'm assuming others did too, but I started learning that this isn't just the Police Department. We have personnel issues and loss of personnel in public works, in planning, in finance, and in bus drivers, you know? So that's why I called the staff meetings a couple of months ago to talk about what is the status of our employees, what is the status of vacancies, what are we doing to recruit them, where are we at? And out of that discussion came the recommendation that we need to do more every chance we can to help our employees know they're appreciated and to bolster their positioning with us, and hence the discussion of a one-time bonus to thank them for their work, knowing what all they've been through. So I think it's important we welcome this topic forward, but just because it appeared in a news story, you know, is, again, we're compelled to listen and learn, but our jobs are to do this every day, all week long, all the time regardless. And so I'm not going to participate in throwing other leaders under the bus and saying, hey, you didn't do your job, you should have done better, you weren't informing us. Now that we're all here and we're all gathering, it's not just the Police Department, it's our whole entire workforce, and we have work to do and good work to do because we have really good people, and they need to have confidence in us as their leaders.
Chief, did you want to wrap up? I think we're done, but...
Yep. Thank you, appreciate all of your time today. And again, we are more than willing to work with the Commission, whatever direction the Commission wants to take, and keep you informed to whatever level you want to be informed about particular information in the department, no problem at all. So I appreciate your time. And then if you would, if we can get our groups of two, we can go over the staff in detail and/or the exit interviews. For those of you who are interested in doing that, we'd be happy to arrange that. So thank you.
So I think, Greg, you're going to have an area for press conference upstairs for the Chief or his team. I think if the press wanted to interview, ask any other questions, they could do it up there. We have another meeting at 1:00, I believe, for the Commission, and we will do that. And I echo what Commissioner Garrick has said, is that the things you want changed or put forth, please put it forth to me. I anticipate on Monday, we will have a plan of action that we are going to get through. And just so you know, the Commission strongly supports the police force. We put over $800,000 in budget last year to help with the new command staff and different promotions and such that we've done with the force. We put 2.4 million in the body cameras, we put a lot of effort into this. You have just done a reorg, you have just done a lot of things with your command staff, and now I would say that now we got to make that work. We have to work very hard on the things that have come up here today and make the people, the boots on the street. I would say to any citizens, give them a high five or give them something, tell them you appreciate all the hard work they do, because this is not about not being safe in our community. We are safe in our community, and we will remain safe in our community. And the team has a commitment to make it even better. Mental wellness, physical health. I hear we're going to echo, echo the hearts to make sure they don't have calcium we don't know about, a guy doesn't drop over dead in the street. We're going to do different things to make sure our people are taken care of. So we will continue to do that. Thank you for this morning, and thank you Commissioners as well. Thank you.